We'll go ahead and get started. First of all, thank you for coming. We have Liam's apps that we do be here just a few minutes. So next one, we have a couple minutes late. We're doing well up here tonight. Appreciate you coming. This time we'll have a place where you can sit in front of the table. There's going to be our indication. I want to ask the cameras to move to the right.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come forward here this evening thanking thee for life and its many blessings. Father, we're thankful for the blessing of living in this community. Father, we love our town and we love those and appreciate those that serve it. Father, we pray your blessings on the council this night, those that have other business to attend to here. Father, we pray that all the business will be conducted in a fair and reasonable manner. Father, help us realize that we all want what's best for our town, our community, for our children, for our posterity, that there's room for disagreement, there's room for discussion about how to accomplish those things. Father, help us not to impugn others' motives and help us to assume that the best interest of our community is in the mind and the heart of all that are involved. Father, we're thankful for the great nation in which we live. Father, we know there are many things wrong with it. We still believe it's the greatest nation on earth and we thank you for blessing us and allowing us to live here. Father, help us to be good stewards of this great blessing. Father, help us also realize and appreciate the work that's done by the council and by the mayor and those in other positions realizing that what goes on tonight is only a small portion of the time and the effort that they put into making sure that things go well with us. And Father, help us to appreciate that and be thankful for that and for them. Father, all these things we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you for your time. We had a previous engagement. First item on the agenda is a recommendation of three minutes from the last meeting.
Go ahead.
Crazy second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, sir? One of the two's a recommendation post in the local newspaper, two department positions, and Tim, if you would, I'd ask you to come up here tonight and explain what the reasons that we need to...
Actually, we need three. Two will put us two people on shift. Two on shift are A, B, and C shift. A, B, and C shift work twenty-four hour, forty-eight hour. There is a D shift, which is a fill-in shift on the third week, keep from having seventy-two hours and whatever how many hours that is overtime. Matt works on eight hours Monday, eight hours Tuesday, twenty-four on Wednesday, and eight on Thursday to get his hours in. Fill in that Wednesday. Every Wednesday, somebody from A, B, and C shift is off. So he fills in and covers that twenty-four hours. And that will put us two people on A, B, and C shift, twenty-four hour, forty-eight hour. And we'll still leave one person there on Wednesday. Matt and I'll be there on Wednesday. That mouse too on Wednesday.
So that's two people then?
Yeah, but after five o'clock, then they want that.
Is that a twenty-four hour shift?
That's shift.
On Wednesday, and just one?
Yes, one.
You're all objective.
Is that what he just wanted to get?
It is. You want the post code?
Now, when somebody takes off after those three years?
Yeah, I just have to...
What happens?
Then we're single by themselves. Where now, we've got one rotating. And if two people off and then come down a couple weeks ago or a month ago, two people were off, one was gone on vacation, one got sick, so I filled in, worked the shift. The fill-in person, the rotation person, worked the shift. Covered.
So how long after these men are hired do a lot of them stay there by themselves? I mean, is it... How long will it take them to be certified?
It depends on whether certified or not. If they're not certified, they... There are two ways. There's a what they call a bridge program, which is four weeks. If a volunteer has a hundred and sixty hours, a certified volunteer, they can go for four weeks and that will get them their certification. If it's just somebody that's green, a rookie, they will have to go twelve weeks.
So posting a chief is very composed. All actors, you know, somebody within the city can apply when anybody outside of the board you've assessed and they're already certified or just take applications.
I would say, yeah, take applications and get to see how many certified.
So you may have some.
May have some that are certified that puts in for it.
Why did Scott about this earlier? He sent Hunter. I'm not going to slam him his first night. And he never replied back. My interpretation of the handbook is you post it within the city first and then after two weeks, I think, then you post it out in the newspaper. But like I said, Scott didn't reply back, so I'm not sure how that worked.
Have you guys yet been contacted?
No, ma'am.
I mean, I know you haven't posted. They have posted it, but are there any that have been taken that aren't filed?
Not, none since I...
I believe that's the way it is. It would pass a...
There it is. If it's been had, is that the end of it?
The end of it talks about entry level, but this is going to be a...
Tim, Father, looking at that, is this a requirement to get our raid damp? Is this what...
Yes, sir, it will help. Yes, sir, it will help. Two men on the shift will help get us more points when we die as a...
And we'll have somebody at far out all the time.
Yes, sir.
They will walk in over there and they will be a soul there.
Let's start on the newspaper.
Let's start on the...
I understand. And when are you going to get this forty headings out here in the shed?
Says thanks, Jim.
That thing's burning out there in the rain. No top on that thing.
It's been certified. It's ten days.
Ten days.
Ten days.
Ten days within the city.
It's supposed to be posted on the department bulletin boards. That's for promotion procedures.
Well, firefighters, in my opinion, is going to be an increase in responsibility from some of the departments and it's going to be an increase in pay in almost all the departments, so...
So post it within the city for ten days?
You get it in the newspaper then after ten days?
We can do that. You still can consider, even though it's employee within the city, they might want to go out. Doesn't actually mean they're going to be...
What did you vote on? Something about that that I'm not aware of?
Well, it is that. It would be the council to decide if they're qualified just because they're city-employed, privately.
Yeah, you don't have to hire them. Just because they're within the city, they apply. You can consider them. If you want somebody certified, I doubt that anybody certified.
Just certify.
Are you... Do you want it certified? That isn't what this is.
He said it would use...
Well, could if it's somebody... Yeah, yeah.
So you're saying a vol... So you're waiting out the volunteers? You want somebody already certified?
No, I mean, I'm just saying... He said, take applications and see. I mean, I mean, I think... However, the fire chain said it just as well as anybody.
So where's that located?
Well...
After it's been posted within the city for ten days, we can put it in the newspaper?
Then for the newspaper, yeah. See what you get there and then pass it.
In the department. In the department. Ten days after that, you post it.
I'll make that motion. Tim, anything else you have to say? Now, we are... Since you're up there, we're going to talk about this. So when we voted to do the bond issue, we did have as part of that money possible to take a truck and a fire station. Give us any kind of date on that. Because I know we've talked with the local architect about the building. You can give the price on the trucks.
I've got some specs. The way we've got spaked out with the company and I mean, we're going with that company. It's just somebody helped us out. Just about got those ready to go. I would think my help was gone last week. He had to go to Wisconsin or somewhere, but he's supposed to be back in touch with me. Help me out a little bit more on that and then we'll be ready to go.
Is the location in the industrial park, did that pan out? I know last time I talked to you, you know we're going to draw the circle.
Yes, and I should have that. I'll try to get that information this week.
So when you get all that, get it to us? If we do something for the next week, you go about by December? Can you have the information?
Yeah, I'll try to get that this week.
Is that the station you'll have to be manned?
No, sir.
That will help out two people?
Yes, sir, that'll help everything out.
East of town.
And you travel from the station to different points in the city to make sure it's within the...
With everything in the city land should be covered on that. And that's why we've got the GIS man in Franklin County that's running that on the computer to make sure that everything's covered.
Does that ensure everybody's out sitting in it's on the east side?
Within a thousand feet of a fire hydrant. And then when we get the trucks and get certified through ISO for water hauling and water sheltering, then that will certify everybody.
That's why we need you, Tom. That's right. I'm sure you can get that. Share me a camera.
Yeah, sure, William. Just saying, I hope to have that this week.
Next item on the agenda is a recommendation to post a local police position that's been open. And Chief, if you will, let you help follow me. Police officer. Recommend... Just I've recommended we post a position for one full-time, A-post-certified police officer in view of a losing one officer that's transferring to another department of the city. From replacing one instead of adding one.
Ronnie, can we go? Can we post it for a part-time?
For your votes? I can't assist for a part-time workforce because a part-time in our, according to our standards, city standards, a part-time is nineteen hours and I have twelve-hour shifts. So a part-time wouldn't be a...
Well, I mean, the hour, but the other departments is doing it and saving money and part of insurance and all that. I just see, it looks plain like we could get at least one.
In addition to the full-time, no.
I couldn't see it being in, instead of the full-time, we're making it put a part-time on once I've got all the slots.
I wouldn't be for that. All right, I'm just talking about the part-time right now. I couldn't see as far as that would work.
If they have more than twenty-nine hours a week, you go back to pay retirement insurance on...
Well, police is a little bit different than fire.
Still go back to...
Well, they wouldn't have to work twenty-nine there or whatever.
Well, I was just going with what you said about shift.
Police, fire, hours is a little bit different than everybody else. We have to calculate. That's what other departments do and they're like, and you know, they seem to do well with it and saves the city taxpayers money. That's just my thought on it.
I would rather... I realize what you're saying, Tim. And I just think a full-time officer better at this time, you know, if we're coming though. Got so busy that with the additional help, I would have a problem with part-time at all.
No, I wouldn't recommend that at all. Part-time isn't part of it.
We're replacing the full-time with the full-time. I think it's just... Ronnie, have you got any applications from the last time we posted? Job? You know, we hired a couple a few months ago. That's like a... Three in. We hired one. I did three applications that time. But nobody's going in. No slides. Several lines. And you're asking for one that's already A-post-certified that can work. You can come and work within two weeks of whoever we select. And then the council approves and then they'll work out a two-week notice with it. I mean, do it, come within two weeks, work out a two-week notice with their department and then probably spend about two weeks with our FTO, learning how we do things and then they'll be able to go on the street. And all that's going to land right around the holiday town. Would there be a recommendation to post for a full-time A-post-certified officer?
I'll make the motion.
Just a second. I'll send it. Is there any discussion? All in favor, sir?
Uh...
Can you vote?
No.
Do you say no, Tim?
No.
I know, Tim, I'll say it's Tim. Do you say no?
I said yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Number four, really, we can do that now. All we need to do is discuss our rates. We're going to do that. So that can change, that can change the place. Do you know for what we will be doing? Allowing eggs transferred. So does the town like to discuss the rates as investigated funds? What's your vote?
I don't know if it's decided. I thought, Father, if we go ahead and address number four now, then Eric will come in at the pay that the other men were hired at. Correct? But if we do it after that, then he will automatically be hired, those other men are going to be on probation. So he's going to start out at a higher...
Well, we need to talk about that, Tim.
Prohibition, though.
We need to talk about that, take the calls before we approve any raises. We did discuss between ourselves about folks that are on probation waiting a year before they get their raise. That's never been done before to my knowledge. Anytime somebody's been hired, let's just say two years ago, before we came in the office, the mayor and council gave a dollar an hour raise approval.
No exception.
They were very likely somebody hired within that year. They got their raise whether they was here six months or three months or nine months. And anytime when I was on council before, when we gave a dollar an hour across the board, even those that's been hired in that year of probation has always gotten that raise. So...
Yeah.
Well, it may not be, but that's the way it's been done. So in my opinion, even those that are on probation now, the last three or four people we hired, they should get the dollar. And I say that because if a dollar an hour raise is approved tonight, one of those men leave that we just hired a few months ago, they're going to be hired at a dollar an hour more to replace them, which, you know, they won't have to wait to get there. You know what I'm saying? That's my thought, something. Let's just say I was hired at twelve dollars and forty-six an hour three months ago to start working at the red. And I leave next week. In order to replace me, that person's not going to start at twelve forty, they're going to start at thirteen. And you know, because it's going to cost more, you know, to replace them at that time. That's what I think. I think that just because they're on probation, you just happen to be a lucky one to get a raise during your first year.
Well, you don't get a raise when you're on probation. You come off probation when you get a raise.
It's not that way in any of our stuff either.
That's the way it's supposed to be.
It's never been done.
Why should you have it that? It would be right thing.
You're changing the pace. You're changing the entire pay scale.
That's right. Because you're changing the entire...
Whatever you're at on this scale.
That's right.
You're going up.
Right, that's right.
Unless we expose those that are on probation.
True. I'm not for exempting them.
I love it.
You know, that's my fault, something. I really, I know what you're saying, you know, during that first year of probation.
I'd like to work for you for last thirty-three.
Well, we've been around ten for twenty years off and on. Our council has never been that way before. Somebody just got a raise, you know, somebody could have come here nine months ago and then the council gave a raise across the board and they got it. They weren't penalized. They just got to... They just happened to be here the year they got a raise. A lot of them did.
They get a raise when they come off, get a raise and come off probation.
Yeah, you can make them wait till that full year's up and then give them the dollar. There's no, that's not, there's not a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that. I just think it's better to do it without probation.
So, well, let's back up again to number four. And again, I hate to, I hate to do this to you.
That's okay.
Because Eric is already here in the city and has already worked out his probation in a different department, he will not be on probation when he transfers.
Correct.
So it isn't going to... Regardless, he isn't going to start out on probation?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So...
So if you change the pay scale to, if you give a dollar an hour raise, he should start at thirteen forty, not twelve? Why would he start less if you're going to raise the pay scale to nine?
Because he's not on probation. But the other guys are.
He should start at thirteen forty, not twelve. Because the pay scale changed.
Because he's not on probation.
Correct.
Okay. So I make a motion that all full-time hourly employees receive a dollar an hour raise excluding Kevin Walker, who's already above the pay scale, and Wade Nichols and Jeff Mitchell, who are the new hires that are on probation.
We've got Mark, too. He's not out of... Well, what difference, like, if you're going to give a dollar across the board? Except the money because you saw... It has to be forty-eight thousand. It has to be worded differently. It's not correct. He's not an hourly employee, so the hourly and the salary have to be worded differently.
So, so you're not voting me a raise at all, a dollar?
I am after we do this. Well, it wasn't on the agenda.
We're discussing it.
So how would I know? How would I know if it's not on here?
Well, we're discussing it and that was my motion.
It just depends on how you word it, I guess.
Okay, so I made a motion, first of all, for the full-time employees to get a dollar an hour excluding Kevin Walker, who's already above pay scale, and Wade Nichols and Jeff Mitchell, who are the new hires on probation.
Sounds like everybody, except us. It sounds like it takes out.
That's for the hourly, hourly full-time.
Did you say hourly?
Yes.
Or just full-time?
Hourly, full-time.
Okay, so it wouldn't include non-hourly full-time?
Right. Because Scott told me that I had to word it differently for the salary.
Yeah, that's...
Because they don't get paid by the hour.
That makes sense.
Okay, so then my next motion...
Well, why do we have this done before tonight?
My next motion is going to be for all salary employees to receive a raise in the amount of two thousand eighty dollars, except for Ronnie and Mike Johnson, who is the new hire that's on probation.
It's very complicated. I'm trying to keep up with it. That's all I want to say.
Well, two thousand eighty dollars, that's...
That's a...
That's a dollar an hour.
It's just Scott...
I know it's a dollar an hour.
Dollar an hour.
I know it's a dollar. I know exactly how to figure it. I knew two twenty-eighty is a dollar an hour.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't understand what you're telling me.
I said it's hard to keep up with... Later, you got to go back and you'll leave theirs, you know?
You got to go back to the...
It's a broad... Makes no difference one way or the other. So I said, why don't we simplify and do that? I made the motion.
We'll go back to your first post.
Okay.
Get a second.
I make a motion for all full-time hourly employees to receive a dollar an hour raise excluding Kevin Walker and Wade Nichols and Jeff Mitchell, who are the new hires and on probation.
Wade Nichols.
And maybe give their exact...
Wade Nichols. Wade Nichols. Say them again. Jeff Mitchell. Jeff Mitchell.
And Kevin will get one because he's already above the pay scale.
Jeff Mitchell and who else?
Wade Nichols.
I got him. Who else?
Is he still on probation?
Who else? I got Wade and Jeff.
Anybody that's on probation.
Okay, the parvates have to tell me who they are.
What's his name?
Officer Playbox, Brad, Brad, Brad.
Okay.
He's only been here a few months.
And who else? I got Wade Nichols, Jeff Mitchell, Wade Nichols.
They're on probation.
Okay, now who else?
Kevin Walker.
Okay.
But Kevin will not get a raise because he's not on...
Yeah, I listed these.
Okay.
And he's just not getting one because...
He's already above pay scale.
Okay. Sheila Parnette's above pay scale, too. She's beyond the pay scale.
I couldn't find her on a pay scale. I questioned that, but nobody answered.
She's beyond the pay scale because the last raise y'all gave her put her out beyond it.
Well, my first proposal was to adopt a whole new pay scale and put everybody on the pay scale, but nobody was for that. So that's why I'm avoiding that this way.
So if you say Kevin Walker because he's above the pay scale, then what about Sheila? And I think there might be another one.
Well, we can remember that.
The mayor told us Kevin was supposed to come back down to the...
When Kevin stepped down as street superintendent, it was my understanding that he was going to go back to regular worker pay, but for some reason he got water department pay, so...
I mean, I don't know. Y'all voted on it. I'm just telling you, if you're going to say...
I don't think we voted on that.
He didn't, he didn't come down when you were told. He was, he was going to step down.
I'm just trying to get a list of all of them for the minutes. But I just, when you say Kevin Walker because he wasn't on, beyond the pay scale, I want you to point out that you've got some more that are beyond.
He's on a different...
He's on the same pay scale that the water department.
Right, but he's in the street department.
Right.
Okay.
But you've also got another employee and I think there might be another one that is beyond their grade level and their pay, their top-out pay. So what do you want to do about that one? I've made my recommendation. I'm trying to get all the names.
I've got a question.
I got Wade, Jeff.
What happens if, if somebody's on probation and then you hire a new hire? He's going to be making more than the ones coming on. That's my thought.
That's it.
That's why you can't, it's going to...
I propose a whole new pay scale. I got no feedback, no nothing. No comments, no yay, no nay, no nay.
So to answer my question, what's the answer to that question?
The answer to the question is, I don't know. You were just hired at the wrong time. That's what the mayor said all the go. If somebody new comes in, you're hired at the right time.
I'm not worried about the person that's going to be hired after the person that's on probation now. I'm not talking about myself, but...
Well, now Eric is not on probation. We've already established that.
Wade is.
Wade is.
Yeah, now what's going to happen if we hire someone two weeks from now? But I mean, it could happen.
Because the exclusions on this, I was speaking reference miles, immediately when he comes off probation, does this dollar... does this dollar an hour go into effect without being brought back to council for vote or anything?
That's right.
By him, it says that we have to approve, but we haven't been doing that.
But that's what I'm asking you. Are you approving that tonight? You know, once he comes off probation, does he get the dollar an hour raise?
That's beside the point.
Once he comes off probation?
That's what I worry about.
Are you approving tonight?
Yeah.
Once he comes off probation?
That's, that's my concern. He's not going to be.
Or do we have to go through the whole thing again?
I think.
After the probation you give, that's what it is. There will be no reason for all of you.
I'm not familiar with the probation process. I just know at the end of the probation time, they're supposed to come, you're supposed to come before us and say, yes, he did this, 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 and this, and everything's wonderful, or no, I have problems with this, 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 and this, and this is my recommendation.
Well, the step rate is given at each year by the board, it's gone by the mayor. You know, until they top out, how many employees are they offering to us? You know, until they just get their steps done, we don't vote on any staff each time, because in each year, until they top out, that's what I'm supposed to do. That's what.
Yeah, but at the end of probation, I mean, at the end of probation, they may not be safe.
Right.
So.
But the valuation of each employee is much.
Well, it's what I'm saying, it's not all about raise.
It's not, it's not, but most of the time they do, I don't know. But Tammy had a motive. I think John's got to do their second.
Well, I never did get all the names, and I have to have all the names for the minutes. I have Wade Nichols, Jeff Mitchell, Playlock, Kevin Walker. And that's it. I thought, I thought there was one more. Okay.
Ronnie.
This one.
Is this legal or not legal?
It seems pretty well legal to me. I mean, the only thing that I can look at is it's an increase in the pay scale. It's not necessarily a raise to anybody. You're just, you're not giving these people on probation a raise. You're just changing their pay scale. So, if you wanted to look at it for a different basis, I can believe.
So.
It is legal however, but either way you do it, it seems like it would be legal. And the only thing, that's really, I mean, there's nothing, it's pretty much at your discretion.
So, your motion was a dollar an hour for everybody.
All full-time.
Right, right. I was just, I was kind of leaning to what Tammy was for, but after listening to what Mike and him have said, I mean, I do understand that. I'd be okay with all that where he's getting a dollar, all supervisors getting two thousand eighty a year and being on. Because I, I do see what, I, we said for Kevin, exactly, because he's already making.
And Ronnie.
And Ronnie. But Mike, I mean, I see what he's saying with it, you know, like he said, if you got somebody on probation, like Wade, you're going to hire somebody else in, and they're going to be making more money, so I can understand that.
Then there's a big chance Mike retire in the next few months and the street.
But Greg, what about the issue between you've got another employee that's beyond the, the pay scale? You're going to have to look at the pay scale itself.
Well, it's, it's been screwed up for years, and it still is.
Well, it got messed up when we went beyond it.
I don't, you know, I don't know whose fault that was, but I'm for everybody getting a dollar an hour, and the supervisors getting two thousand eighty a year, and God knows what you want to do with Kevin, I guess. Well, you know, there ain't no points up here talking about it all night.
Let's go back to Tammy's motion. Here's her second motion.
Is that what, is that what, is that what you're citing, Greg?
No. I let mine go and do this.
I'm confused now.
Greg says. Greg says.
Can't do the exact same thing we got to do.
Full-time, a dollar an hour for all full-time hourly employees.
Including Wade and Jeff and?
Everybody except Kevin. Right?
All right, you changing your, you changing your motion to that?
I don't, I think y'all have to not do mine.
So, nobody second mine, and then when you change it to that.
And you're making that motion? Yeah, I would make a motion to give, to go ahead and give the one during probation. Okay, you don't get a second on her.
Correct.
And that Greg's made a motion.
I'll second Greg.
Make a motion, Tammy second. All hourly.
All hourly employees, full-time, which includes Wade Nichols, Jeffrey Mitchell.
Everybody on probation.
Everybody on probation, a dollar, all the supervisors, with the exception of Ronnie, two thousand eighty dollars each, which reminds me of the same thing.
Exactly.
With the exception of Kevin.
What about part, Tammy? Will you put that in there?
Let's do this, and then we'll work on that. Greg's made a motion, Tammy made a second. Screen, you want to discuss it? All the favors.
Uh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Can I get that for you?
Your supervisor's a dollar.
Number four, it's back to the council. It would be a recommendation to allow Eric to transfer to the street department. As a voluntary starter pay, starting Tuesday, let's do tomorrow, Tuesday, we're ready for starting hourly rate pay on thirteen forty. That's what we go to, which is really about two dollars less than what Eric would be making if he was still a policeman.
I make a motion that we, the command, that Eric be transferred.
Right.
Tammy second. Any other discussion? All favors. Thank you, thank you, Eric. Proud to have, proud to have you in the street department, just as much as we was, but it's. Appreciate the next one for you.
You'll have a good place to work.
We appreciate it.
It's going to be a hard change, thirteen forty.
That's the new rating.
That's right. Next item on the agenda is discussed how to park, do burn it, remove. What we want to do with that property is officially get it tore down and removed, so we can do some excavation over there. That's a place that we're going to either have parking or possibly a kids' park, move from new location. But either way, the house has got to go. You're no longer needed. And Tam brought up something tonight that may be something we can do. Tam, tell us what your proposal was.
Well, we're fixing to add a building down there. I talked to a ward today, that if you're going to burn it and stake it, use some of the lumber, you're going to get rid of it, but if you're not, if you're going to sell it, somebody else to do it, that's fine. And Dan is just important what you want to do.
Right, so, what we can do is, we can go through the house and salvage what we need. And what, what would be your thoughts on that as far as, was your proposal going to be, or your thoughts going to be to stake? Tear all the brick off and everything, and we burn it after it's torn down?
We'd get what, we could, what we could use to save taxpayers' money, to keep from having to buy it somewhere else to build a, build a maintenance building. I think what they're trying to build. And.
They would be responsible for tearing down.
The town did it one time, the former dumpster park, which tore a house down and built, built it with it, didn't have to purchase anything. But that's just according to y'all. If you got something else in mind, parting's fine too.
That's fine with me.
I thought one time we might could put it up for bids, but to sell and move, but I don't think it can move.
Sign the check, we all get it, from front to rear, carport, how they, how they move.
No, I don't think it'd be worth it.
Oh, just that, how much do you, you might know? Do you know?
Ah, it's built back in the sixties, I think, early sixties.
Well, I don't know that we have to vote on that. I think we need to vote to deal with the property and, you know, deal with the house.
And you know what, and when we get through with it, Tammy will burn it, still, that's what, what you'll do with it.
We've got enough equipment to, to push it down, push it over.
What, what, what do we want to use that piece of property for?
Parking. Parking is, necessarily need to park it and possibly playground, but they have turns over there, this golf, no shop, all turns. Get parking lot down the street, it's just like I said. So, that would be the first choice. How if we just vote to just, property's no longer needed, would that be okay?
Yeah, I think so, it's like how you want to spend your.
I think that's what's going to.
As long as it was making alcohol possible.
One government will allow the government to city for the state.
Would it be a motion to deal with this property if it's no longer needed? Figure out who to deal with the state, not with the property.
I make a motion, Wade. I'd like to see it tore down, let's have a parking lot of weapons break down.
All the favors, yeah. Before we have a motion to adjourn, this coming Friday night, downtown merchants are getting together and having a Christmas open house. Going to be this Friday from six until nine, there'll be things for the kids to do, about thirteen, fourteen bits, because they're going to take part in this. And they've done this on the road, the changers trying to help get promoted. There'll be something for the kids, I think there's going to be a train ride for them too. Of course, they have this church, keep the building, be used for kids to write letters, to sign a blog, things like that, and have these supervisors, federal ambassadors. So, from six to nine, this coming Friday night, this will be going to support the downtown merchants. I think CIS is going to be more buildings doing free Christmas wrapping. So, this is time to come out, fellowship with each other, toll booth be open, coffee booth be open. Have a theme, elf on the shelf, where kids can come, get clues, and these kids look for the elf on the shelf, and hopefully they'll find it toward the fourth of October. These participate bids will allow church and dearest for prizes to be given away. Just a good time for downtown merchants to celebrate Christmas before Thanksgiving. So, this Friday night from six until nine. Screen, you have an announcement.
Mayor, we have just about five minutes to go into the exact discussion.
Sure.
Before we, or Jeremy, Tammy, I, I.
Before we go into.
Yeah, I like, I don't know what you call these things up here in town where they got a light pole in a tree. They're in front of jumping that law, there's, there's nothing, and there's people running over that one left and right. That's the only one in town that don't have a tree. And people jumping at things, you'll tear up a car.
Am I going to blow that or something?
Yeah, and we're going to be responsible for that, I guess, if we need a tree, but then that never stops. I had to, that pointed out to me when I looked today. Everything else has got a light pole in it or a tree, and most people park here. They're just so used to not having that there, and they just pull up and they run over that.
Hey, and that reminded me of something, and Mike, I don't know if you did it or not, but I'm going to give you the credit for it. The stop signs that have the red reflective around them, that's nice. It makes it, I mean, they're much more visible, it makes you know when to stop, and.
Good idea, good idea.
Oh, okay. Well, whoever did it, I think that's, that was a good idea.
So, we won't have any of the business second session. How do your motion go in second session?
Yeah, what was it for?
What are we going for?
Good name, Greg.
Yes.
Tammy's got a motion. Is there a second?
Right.
All the favors, yeah. Come on, baby, so we vote. Lance made a motion, Greg, he has a second to go back into.
It's like I wrote.
Your motion to adjourn. Greg made a motion to adjourn.